Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. We'll bring tonight's city council meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, any discussion? Hearing none. To the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Presentations and public hearings. The first item is administrative hearing for tobacco sales violation for Route 65 liquor. Stephanie.
Route 65 Discount Liquors employee Tristan Havari has been cited as having sold tobacco products to a minor as part of the compliance check by the Inoka County Sheriff Department on December 3rd, 2021. Mr. Havari was approached by an underage individual and sold the tobacco products to the underage buyer in violation of City Code, Chapter 18, Article 4, Sections 18-176, prohibited sales. Copy of the sheriff's reports included in your packet is Attachment 1. Route 65 Discount Liquors is located at 18453 Highway 65 Northeast. The cities provided the owner and the tobacco license holder, Mr. Brad Slosson, the opportunity to be heard at tonight's hearing. Notice was provided on January 25th of 2022 of the hearing scheduled for the April 14th meeting, or I mean, the February 14th meeting. In an effort to accommodate all parties, this hearing was rescheduled for tonight. City Council has several options with respect to administrative action. Any person, including an individual licensees, who sells any tobacco product to a person under the age of 21 years is subject to an administrative penalty. This is Route 65 Discount Liquors' first violation of the tobacco ordinance. For the first time violation, the city may impose a civil fine up to $150. In addition, the city may suspend the license for a period up to 20 days. The city may agree with the licensee to waive up to 10 days of suspension at a rate of two days for every eight hours of community service performed by the licensee's employee. Copy of Resolution 2022-22 is attached, which provides for findings, conclusions, and administrative penalties for this case. Council should review the resolution and make a determination of the appropriate penalties to be imposed. So at this time, staff's recommending council conduct the hearing and provide staff with direction on the penalties to be administered with adoption of Resolution 2022-22.
Okay, we'll open the administrative hearing for tobacco compliance violation. If there's parties, a part of us wish to speak to council, now is your time. Please come up to the podium. State your name and address for reference.
Good evening. Brad Slosson, 2852 179th Avenue Northeast, Ham Lake. Here's the owner of Route 65 Discount Liquors with my manager, Brad Slosson, my son, and my employee Tristan. We failed it. We made a mistake. We've been in now nine years. It's the first time we have failed on tobacco. Obviously, the council here knows me. You know I don't want to be here for this. You know I'd rather be here for something that we're doing great in the community. So we're not happy about it. Tristan's a good employee. He's a good person. He's worked for me for six months. Not the time with his failure for six months. I coached him in baseball years ago. He doesn't have a DUI. He doesn't have a speeding ticket. He doesn't have anything going on wrong in his life except for this. So he still works there. We hope he works there for a long time. And we hope not to be in front of you for this ever again. But mistakes happen. This was an ID that was vertical. And truth be told, I didn't know the state even had a vertical license. So it caught him by surprise, too. He read the ID. He thought the person was of age and he sold some cigarettes, I believe. So, you know, it's made a mistake. I think that's what he did. I don't think it's going to happen again. I think now it's all that much more to his attention. Our store policy, just so everyone knows, if you're under 40 by view, we ID you. Because we don't want to have that guessing game. So he did the appropriate action. He ID'd the person and just misread it. We do have, we also do sell pull tabs there. So we have a device that reads the ID for us. So any future times, he knows also we can use that device to read the ID. So we hope not to be here in front of you for this again. Whatever fines there is, we're willing to pay them and hope to not have this happen again. Questions?
Any questions for Brad?
So on this vertical ID, is the birthdate in a different spot? Or is it harder to read or anything?
I've never seen it.
The way I understand it, all provisional licenses are now vertical, right? Is that true, Derek? Okay. So if it's vertical, they're 18 or younger.
Correct.
So. They did that a couple of years ago.
Well, and the last one we did was the same.
I didn't know that either. So now we, we all learned something through this, that if it's vertical, he's for sure under 18. And then our store policy, even since, I think it's been nine years, has been, we don't, we've never sold anything to anybody if they're not 21 or older. We don't want people at 18 buying tobacco. And then they get to know our staff and all of a sudden, we think they're 21 because they're in there allowed. So our policy always has been 21. But we made a mistake here, so.
Any other questions for Brad?
Are there any policies that you'll be putting forth from this, any other, any experiences to ensure that this won't happen again?
Nothing more than we already have. I think we've done a pretty good job at it. He knew what to look for, just misread it. You know, we're not standing here in front of you where we were selling tobacco at the back door. Normally, this is a minor. This was a mistake. I think it's a one-time thing and I certainly hope it doesn't happen again.
Now, we don't want it either because we like your business and our
Yeah.
community.
Right.
Well, good things are your business.
Thank you. Yeah, we're on the same, same page.
So you mentioned the card reader. Is that something you're gonna work in your policy, that you're gonna use?
That isn't a policy if it's a question. You know, nowadays, I mean, the police officer here, I'm sure, is aware of this. You can buy an ID for $20 online. I mean, it's kind of ridiculous where we're at in today. And so we try to, we get books mailed to us on what to look for and how to, certain lights, we have certain pens. So we have a lot of training, but it changes daily. And I'm sure the officer here sees this in his everyday way of life. So again, it's tobacco, it's serious. But we're gonna do all we can do to make sure it doesn't happen again.
Well, I think, you know, to me, I mean, I've been here a while and been through a few of these. And except in one extreme case, they've all been cases of mistaken and the clerk just didn't read the card right or was in a hurry or whatever. And in each of those cases, it's been a learning experience for everyone. And like I said, except for one case, I remember very clearly, you know, we haven't had any repeats, you know, or at least not right away. So it's, so I'm glad it's something that's gonna be taken seriously. Any other questions for Brad? Anyone else, anyone else would like to speak?
Just want to say thank you for coming to our meeting tonight and explaining the situation.
I wasn't coming alone. He's coming with me. All right, thanks.
Thanks, Brad.
Thanks, Brad.
So is there anyone else wishing to speak on this? Otherwise, we'll close the hearing, so. Okay, we'll close the administrative hearing. Bring it to council.
Well, I'm going to, my opinion is that I don't think there should be a penalty. I think first time offense is, and having to come here is always enough. I think this new ID situation and the, what's the word that they're using to go to businesses and check them? I think right now, it's almost like a setup. It's almost like a training thing for businesses to realize that this new type of ID is something that they can catch people with. And I don't like it. I don't like when people are being, when they're trying to set people up. So that's my opinion on this, so.
Well, and our sheriff's deputy can correct me, but other during COVID, the sheriff's department, I think, pretty much checks every business once a year. And that's part of the process. Every city does it. And if you don't check, then you're not enforcing anything, so.
No, I understand that.
It's not, I mean, it's, I mean, I think if you read the sheriff's report, it's not a setup. It was very clear, you know, you know, they had a high schooler, wasn't of age, had the ID. I mean, it's, it's meant to catch somebody, but it's meant for them to pass it, not for them necessarily fail, so.
I know, but I think these new IDs are catching people off guard. And I don't know if businesses have been, I think all businesses should have been pre-warned on what's, what they look like and what to be aware of. And from what I've heard on the, this one and the last tobacco compliance violation, I don't think these businesses have been warned well enough because even he has said he has never heard of them or seen them before.
I can't say for certain, but I don't think there's a business that sells cigarette or alcohol that doesn't understand what the age minimum is.
Oh, I understand.
But that's what you're saying right now.
No, it's the new ID that is getting people.
No, this is years old. It's been around for years.
There's vertical IDs?
The vertical is just meant to, it's meant to be obvious that it's provisional license.
Right, and I'm seeing.
The dates are on there. He read, he read the dates of the year, so.
And no matter what, I believe it is store policy to refuse sale to anybody for tobacco or alcohol. And if an ID looks funny to them, if they don't understand the ID, they can refuse the sale.
I mean, this young man made a mistake. There's no doubt about that.
I understand that.
But to sit and criticize the sheriff's department for doing compliance checks is so way off base. I mean, that's what we do. We issue licenses to these businesses. The part of license, they have to abide by the law. And if you think that, that cities shouldn't check up on those licenses?
I didn't say that.
You said it was a setup.
Am I able to say anything in this plan or not? So, Mayor?
I'm sorry.
I just want to say for the record, we don't think it was a setup either. The sheriff's department is doing their job. We are okay being tested. This is a mistake on our end. The ID wasn't a surprise to me personally and my staff. That doesn't excuse us. Okay, so I, and I appreciate your support. And of course, whatever, you know, if there's a fine, so be it. If there's not a fine, that's great as well. But I don't want anyone to leave here with a record that we're unhappy with the sheriff's department because we're, we are okay with compliance checks. Nobody passed them. And we're happy, right? So as a matter of fact, when my staff passes one, I give them a rate, a bonus. I have a bonus policy on this. We don't want to be here, okay? So the sheriff's department, the ID was, was for sure underage. It wasn't smeared. It wasn't unreadable. This was on us. Okay? Well, thank you.
Thanks, Brad.
Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion for the adoption.
We have a motion on the table.
Do we?
We did.
You made a motion, right?
No.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were making a motion.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'll make a motion for the adoption of Resolution 2022-22. Resolved. How do I want to say this? Resolved with the penalties as stated by the city council. Administrative penalty in the amount of $150 and yeah, that's what I want to say.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. And just to be clear, too, in the write-up, council does have an option for first offense for community service. We've kind of shied away from that. So this motion and the resolution is just for administrative penalty, which is consistent with the violation we had a couple of months ago, too.
Yeah, it's consistent with the last one.
Any other discussion? I just want to say I appreciate you being in here, Tristan. Appreciate you being here. And, you know, these are meant to be learning experiences, so. You know, the compliance checks, or we, council's taking these seriously because this is our youth. We're basically trying to protect. And this is one of the only ways that cities can do this, is try to enforce these, so. Okay, if there's no other discussion, to the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion passes. Again, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Brad, Tristan.
You're good to go.
You're good to go.
Unless you got a check written out, so. You can deal with that tomorrow.
Thanks, Brad. Thanks, Tristan. Thanks, Brad.
Okay. Inoka County Sheriff's Monthly Report. Good evening.
Mayor, council members. For those who don't know me, I'm Lieutenant Derek Peters. I'm a lieutenant in our patrol division. February had a total of 439 calls for service, approximately 100 calls more than we had the previous month of January. Deputies responded to one burglary and two assault calls throughout the month. Made a total of eight custodial arrests and their traffic enforcement efforts resulted in the issuance of 30 traffic citations on our roadways in East Bethel. Some notable calls our deputies handled this past, past month include a burglary report handled by Deputy Aldrin on February 9th of 2022. Deputy Aldrin was dispatched to an address near the 21600 block of Luann Drive Northeast. The reporting party that lived there stated that someone during the previous Sunday and Tuesday mornings had broken into their garage. The reporting party was missing a set of tailor-made 2.0 golf clubs. The golf clubs were valued at approximately $700. The reporting party located a set of footprints in the snow that led to the roadway. The snow had melted and it looks like there wasn't any tracks that Deputy Aldrin could follow. So unfortunately, those golf clubs were not recovered and we did not have any suspect information to follow up on. Deputy Aldrin did stay for quite some time and provided some tips on securing his, securing the reporting party's property. On February 16th of 2022, Deputy Quam handled a counterfeit bill report. The reporting party, a Ham Lake Lions Club member, advised him that they sell pull tabs at the Hidden Haven Golf Course and that a counterfeit $100 bill had been passed at the establishment the weekend before. There was no suspect information and it is unknown who had passed the bill. The reporting party stated that she had been in contact with her club's bank and that the bank would turn over the bill to the Secret Service for follow-up. On February 19th, 2022, at 11:26 PM, Deputy Cutler made a traffic stop on a vehicle after observing it making a legal U-turn at Highway 65 and 187th Avenue Northeast in the city of East Bethel. Deputy Cutler made contact with the driver, who smelled of an alcoholic beverage and exhibited other signs of chemical impairment. He was asked to, the driver was asked to exit his vehicle and perform standardized field sobriety tests, which he did, but subsequently failed. Deputy Cutler provided a preliminary breath test to the male, which indicated a reported, reported value of .24. The male was arrested and transported to jail where he refused any further testing. The male was charged with second-degree DWI and gross misdemeanor test refusal. On February 20th, at 8:13 PM, Deputy Mowbrutton was dispatched to a vehicle fire at 213th Avenue and Randolph Street Northeast. When he arrived, all the occupants were safely out of the vehicle and he was told that there had been no injuries involved in this. The reporting party reported that he had been having issues with the fuel line inside of his vehicle. Deputy Mowbrutton observed a trail of gasoline behind the vehicle, approximately 100 feet behind it. East Bethel Fire arrived and extinguished the fire. County Highway was also asked to respond, assault the roadway to prevent further icing of our roads. Finally, on February 21st, 2022, Deputy Brownfield stopped a vehicle for expired registration at Buchanan and 233rd Avenue Northeast. Deputy Brownfield identified the female driver by Minnesota D.O. and learned that she had a revoked driving status and also an active felony warrant out of Pine County. Deputy Brownfield placed the female under arrest for the warrant and transported her to jail without incident. As I usually do at the end of my monthly brief here, I went through the reports as I, as I do and I saw a bunch of scam reports that had come in through the city over the month of February here. So again, as a, as a friendly reminder, a lot of them are of the phone call variety. So if anyone in the public or anyone listening out there tonight gets these strange phone calls and they don't know who's actually trying to contact them and asking for money, please, as a, as a friendly reminder, hang up and make a report with us. I know it might seem minor, but we do care about the information that you folks have to give us with things of this nature. We do log them. We do create reports on every 911 call that's dispatched to the sheriff's office. So please, if you see that here in the, in the spring months, let us know. I appreciate the opportunity again this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Questions for our sheriff's deputy?
Say, Derek, is there still an opportunity to have, like, meet the deputies night? I know we talked about that last month. I mean,
Yeah.
maybe something the next month or two?
Absolutely. I have it set up for our next city council meeting, which I believe is, what, the fourth Monday of, well, it'll be April, right? So I think it's the 25th. The reason why we had to back out of tonight's was the sheriff is over at Oak Grove tonight and he wanted to, he wanted to be present. So I said, we'll just reschedule with the city council and we'll get everybody here, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So you, you mentioned that in February, there were 100 more calls than there were in January. Is that typical?
You know what? I was just talking to chief, a fire chief back here, and he, he brought up a good point. There's less days and, less days in February than there was in January.
Yeah.
But, you know, for me, it was surprising to see those numbers come across my desk. A lot of them were still of the miscellaneous variety, you know, whether it's a 911 hang-up that ends up to be a whole lot of nothing or a traffic complaint. We also had a bunch of snow, snow days those days. I remember going through some of the reports and we had tons of crashes on Highway 65 during the early morning hours. And I kind of chalked it up to that. As for the severity of crime or the need for 911 assistance, I don't think there was much difference in the, again, severity of the calls for service, just simply more of them. So I contributed to the weather. Maybe some of the days, I don't, I don't recall if it was warmer or colder. You know, any, any of those extremes tend to drive our call volume up. You know, if somebody, somebody on a very cold day has a stalled vehicle, they'll be more apt to call for assistance on a very, very cold day than, you know, on a very warm day where we could have people outside jogging and, and things of that nature, so.
So, so do you know if other communities have seen, saw an increase in February as well?
Yeah, you know what? I think across the board for us, I think it was a busier month.
Okay.
But I, I don't have the hard data in front of me to support that. I just felt like we were a lot busier in February than we were in January.
Well, I just want to make sure, like, for some reason, East Bethel was up and no one else was.
Yeah, nothing, nothing came across my desk. I was actually struggling for things to actually brief you folks on because it was like we had more calls, but there wasn't anything out of the ordinary, I guess.
Okay.
A lot of people are out after COVID, too, I think. People are tending to venture out.
Could be.
I would agree.
I have a question on the $100 bill. Is there a way for people within, like, like me, if somebody asks me to change out a $100 bill and I give them 520s, you know, is there a way for me with my naked eye to tell if that's a fake $100 bill?
That's a, that's a two-pronged answer. I've seen some pretty very poorly made counterfeit bills. And I think anybody that's handled money long enough would know that, in fact, this is a counterfeit bill. But I've also seen some very well-crafted counterfeit bills that came from a professional criminal that would require probably a marker of some sort that they have at gas stations. Maybe you've seen them there. There's a marker that reacts to different ink that's used in a counterfeit bill when compared to that of a real bill. So there are some tools out there. But I've certainly, I would certainly not put it past any, anybody that's got experience making counterfeit bills to, to pass them to me if I'm in a hurry. You know, I could certainly overlook it as well. So a lot of it has to do with cut. You know, I've seen edges that don't look right. You know, I've seen edges that actually look very right and they end up to be counterfeit bills. So it really depends on how much time and how much energy you're putting into actually looking into that bill and what tools are available to you, you know, such as that marker, to, to make that mark and see how that ink reacts to that ink of that bill.
So the counterfeits, does that include, I believe with the 100, there's a strip in it and a hologram that you hold up to the light?
Correct.
So will counterfeit's even have those in it?
Yeah, you know what? I have not seen one with the ribbon in there. The, the incident that I, that I recall is several years ago. And there was not a ribbon in those large, in those large bills. But again, I would have to actually take it, put it up to a very bright light to see that. You'd have to take some time to really study it. And, you know, if you're in the midst of a transaction, say at a gas station for gas, you may not, you know, as a cashier, you may not have that time or, or inkling or suspicion. And of course, you've got very innocent people passing these bills that, that took possession of the bill.
Yeah.
And now they don't know and now you're passing a counterfeit bill and you have no idea.
It's in circulation.
Yeah. A very interesting call, definitely.
It happened to me once where I got a couple 20s. The paper didn't feel right. And that's ended up what it was, the counterfeit bills.
Yeah.
And I probably had my pocket for weeks. I didn't know it, so.
Right.
So I do have one other question. On the first page of the monthly report, at the bottom, traffic arrests. For January, there's 17. February, there's 30. Are those actual arrests made when doing a traffic stop?
No. Those would not constitute a, a physical arrest of a person. That's like a citation or a warning.
Okay, so those would be tickets given out essentially?
Correct. Paper.
Not, not actually being put in handcuffs?
Yeah, we do consider our paper citations, our paper warnings as technically arrests.
Okay.
Custodial arrests would, are counted in there and I believe what we had, we had that gross misdemeanor DUI arrest. That's, that's included in that, in that 30. But the citations count as well, yes.
Okay. So I was thinking, that's a lot of people getting arrested on the roadway.
Right.
Okay.
Any other questions for council? Any questions for our audience tonight for sheriff's department? You folks are too easy on you. Great. Thanks, Derek.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good night. Fire Chief Desharm.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So February 2022 was about the same as January. We answered 68 calls in February and we answered 69 calls back in January. So we only answered one call last, but it was three days shorter. And of those 68 calls, 50 of them were medicals. And our medicals continue to be about 70% of, of our business. Six crashes, and most of those happened during the, those couple snows that we had on Highway 65 in, in the morning. By the way, that stretch, like at 221st South, Southbound, in the Southbound lanes, for whatever reason, when, when we have any type of weather, that's, to me, the slipperiest part of, of Highway 65. And it goes almost down to where Northway Sports are just short of that intersection.
Is, is there anything that Mendot could do to solve that?
I don't know.
Because they?
But they know about it because it's, they heavily salt it when they can.
Okay, because I, I know Mendot has plans to re-mill Highway 65 from Sprinting Park all the way up to 217th. So if there's an active project, if there's something that we can.
Yeah, and I, you know, I don't know if the numbers, you know, the, the stats, you know, support what I'm saying. It's just that, you know, I've talked to a number of deputies, you know, the daytime deputies, and it just seems like that's the slipperiest part of, and it is. I know a couple of times, I myself have almost gone and lost control and into the ditch, going very slow, so. We had seven alarms, fire alarms and CO alarms. And here's what I love the best. We didn't have any illegal burning calls. And I, I thank the residents for that. And we had two fires in East Bethel and then we assisted Ham Lake, or I think it was Ham Lake on a, on a house fire, property fire. So as of today, this, right now, we're like six calls ahead of last year, was, which was a record. Interesting enough, when you look at February, the first half of February was busier than the second half by about six, seven calls, it looks like. So, but anytime you try to make sense of that, it, it doesn't work, so. But that was the month of, of February. One thing I do want to talk about before I give it back to you, Mayor, is fire permits. One thing I do want to talk about before I give it back to you, Mayor, is fire permits. We've had quite a few questions. On Thursday, I think it was, the DNR put out a note that it's extremely dry and they were moving their air resources to Cambridge. And if you're going to do any burning and you, and you need a permit, now's the time to do it because I think the DNR is going to put on burning restrictions. I want to remind everybody that if you're going to burn, pile burn, you can't be burning grass and, and stuff like that. We're talking about branches and trees, you know, like a pile burn. And you can only burn from six o'clock at night until eight o'clock in the morning. Okay, you need a variance that you have to get from the DNR to burn during the day. And I also want to warn everybody that things are, you know, especially when it's this dry, some of us had a discussion of this before the meeting. When it's, it is dry, when it's this dry, the DNR is changing almost daily the burning restrictions. So don't be alarmed if you get a phone call, if you got a permit and you get a phone call saying you can't burn. So it's just the, just the way it is right now.
Yeah, I, I saw three of the DNR trucks today in our city, so they're.
They're, they're mobilizing, yeah, so.
Would those burning restrictions also apply to the three by three recreational fires?
No, you can, right now, there's no restriction on recreational fires. And you're right, three by three by three, use the rule of thumb, but it can't be three by three by three with leaves and stuff like that. And a recreational fire is a recreational fire, okay? And don't even think about burning treated lumber in that. Anything else?
Any other questions for Chief? Any questions for our audience? Pass all questions before there they go. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
All right, on to our consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda. I would like to pull item I.
I would like to pull item G.
I would second, and I would like to pull item D.
Did you say E?
D as in dog.
D as in dog. And motion is second, I'm going to pull item J.
And I'd like to pull item F.
So we have left A, B, C, E, and H. Is there any further discussion? To the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Item D.
I was not in attendance at this meeting and I would like to abstain from approving the minutes.
Is there a motion, item D?
I'll make a motion to approve item G as written.
Second.
Motion made, second for item D, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Abstain.
Brian abstains. Item F.
This is regarding the voluntary cost sharing agreement with Anoka County for the LIDAR, LIDAR mapping. I, I like that it gave how much other parts are contributing, but I'm wondering if you can tell me how much it's costing the city of East Bethel for this program?
Just a one-time fee of two thousand and five hundred dollars.
That's all it?
Yes.
Oh, okay, thanks, that's all I have. With that, I'll make a motion to approve item F.
Second, motion made, second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Item G.
Item G is the Blaine Anoka County Airport Authority Alternate Member Appointment. It says, the appointment does not have to be an elected official and staff requests council consider an appointment of an alternate member to the BACAA. Who is the alternate member?
We don't have one.
We don't, no.
Right?
Then it's on the consent agenda to.
Consider appointment?
Right, we have.
Consider an appointment of an alternate member.
I know Jack's not here, but he had mentioned that if we can't get anybody that he would do it, so. Because you don't need a council member, so.
If, unless somebody else wants to. Table is till next meeting when Jack's here?
We can, I just think if, I mean, it's on the consent.
Your next airport meeting?
May eleventh.
Oh, we have time, so. Yeah.
Okay, then we'll pull item G.
Why, suggest we table it?
Table it.
Make motion table.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to table item G.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Item I.
Item I, I'd like to thank Dan Virchow for his, for his time in the fire department. He's retiring, I just want to wish him good luck and you'll be missed. And with that, I will approve item I as written.
Second.
Motion made, second, any discussion? I, I agree.
We'd all like to thank him.
Yeah. To the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Item J, I pulled that because the applicant is a friend of mine, so I'm going to abstain.
I'll make a motion to approve item J.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Hearing none, to the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I abstain. So that completes our consent agenda. On to new business, our planning commission, Stephanie.
Good night, gentlemen.
All right, tonight, first item, we have a conditional use permit for a daycare center known as Bright Beginnings Childcare and Learning Center, located at four eight one seven Viking Boulevard Northeast. Daycares are identified as a conditional use in the B one limited business district. Bright Beginnings Childcare and Learning Center is under contract to purchase the, the property located at four eight one seven Viking Boulevard Northeast with the intent to convert the existing building into a daycare center. The business owner is working with an architect to remove the separating wall in the building and do the necessary renovations to the existing building to accommodate up to seventy children. Staffs determined the location has adequate parking in the existing lot. There are two access points, which will allow for adequate flow of traffic during the morning drop offs and evening pickups. Daycares are regulated by the state and county levels, so there aren't any additional regulations that are required by the city for the operation of the daycare, just the conditional use permit. On May twenty-second of two thousand twenty-two, Planning Commission held the public hearing. There were no public comments. And Commissioner Creppis just asked if there would be adequate space for a play area in the yard of the property, just because there is a septic system in the well in the back. And staff did confirm that the property owner has identified the proper space to accommodate play areas for the children and it will be fenced. Planning Commission voted six zero with one absent in favor of recommending approval of the CUP request. So at this time, the commission again recommends approval to the city council for the CUP for the daycare center located at four eight one seven Viking Boulevard Northeast with a condition set forth in resolution two thousand twenty-two dash eighteen.
I'll make a motion for approval of the CUP for a daycare center located at forty-eight seventeen Viking Boulevard, pin number twenty-four thirty-three twenty-three forty-four dash zero zero two one, with the condition sent forth in resolution twenty-two dash eighteen.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion?
On the resolution, there is a typo. It is now therefore be it resolved that the city council hereby approves for a daycare and the center is C N E T E. Can somebody correct that on the resolution before it's signed, please?
I don't think that needs a motion.
No, it doesn't. Just.
I think it's a great use for a property. My concern is, thinking back to the years where I used to do the drop offs and pickups of daycare all the time, it's busy in the morning and it's busy in the afternoon. And I'm concerned about that driveway coming straight out, teeing with County Road seventeen, because it's already very busy. And I can't imagine there will be seventy kids in there, but even if there's thirty kids in there, that's thirty cars going in and out at the same time. So I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering if, you know, if there isn't a way to allow the access on Viking to be to enter and then the access off of Wild Rice to be the exit. So that way, the traffic's already going to a, an intersection that's controlled and there's already traffic there. Because the other thing that complicates this, if you remember last year when we had a discussion about Dollar General, that driveway, it's not showing a picture because it's not there yet, but it's like thirty feet to the east. And there have been several close calls of people pulling out of Dollar General. So I'm just wondering in, if we shouldn't somehow direct, try, direct the, be an entrance and exit to the property just for traffic safety. And, and I would think the applicant would be, you know, concerned about that too.
Yes, I agree.
Because that gets, that, and at five o'clock in the afternoon, that's a very busy area, so. Because you've got the gas station, you've got EJs right there and there's just a lot of traffic right there. There's like one, two, three, four roads right there, but none of, none of them meet, they're all staggered. So it's, it's kind of a trouble area, so. I don't know what anyone else thinks, but.
I have no opposition to that.
What's that?
I have no opposition to that.
Is the county going to make them put a turn, turn lane there or any way if, if they don't, to come in there from twenty-two?
They aren't gonna, no.
No turn.
Because it's an existing business, yes.
It'd be their, it'd be Dollar General's driveway, so.
Yeah, it's supposed to be right on top of Dollar General, yeah.
Council can add a condition in the resolution as well to do that for the traffic flow.
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion to, to amend the resolution. And give a little flexibility to, to have the Viking driveway entrance to be designated as the primary entrance to the, to the business and the Wild Rice access to be the primary exit. And I think they can just do that by signage, obviously no one's going to enforce it, but to try to encourage that. And I would think from a traffic flow standpoint, they're probably going to want that too because you're going to have people coming from both garage driveways at the same time. It's going to be a mess, so, when they're, when they get busy, so. Is there a second to the motion to amend?
Second, and I just want to say it doesn't look like it'll be too hard because of that top part of the parking lot that goes on the Wild Rice. It looks like we just need to be a little bit of pavement put there.
Well, I think there's, there's pavement there.
That's already an.
It's already paved, it's just kind of that brown.
Yes.
I don't know what that is, it's paved. I'm not sure what that is.
Say concrete apron?
Off of Wild Rice?
Yeah, yeah, that's a concrete apron.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, actually.
Is there any other sec, or any other discussion? To a motion to amend, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes, back to the original motion. Any further discussion?
I just want to tell them, thanks for coming to East Bethel. It's, it's nice to have a daycare because I think it's going to be busy.
Oh, it's, it's definitely.
It's a good spot and there's a lot of people already asking about employment, so it's, I think it's going to be busy.
For a building, so.
Right.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, to the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Next item on the agenda is a variance for one ninety-five thirteen East Front Boulevard. I'm going to abstain from the discussion on this as I know the applicants very well. So Tim, let me take over.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next would be the variance to the ordinary high water level setback at one nine five one nine East Front Boulevard Northeast. Stephanie?
In two thousand twenty-one, the property owners placed a fifty-four square foot shed, sixty feet from the ordinary high water level or known as the OHW. Because the shed's less than two hundred square feet, a building permit was not required on it. The house meets the required seventy-five foot setback from the ordinary high water mark. And I have this up here on the screen, if you take a look on the right side of the screen. So you can see the existing house is seventy-five feet from the OHW. It should be noted that the house had city sewer and water. It could be located fifty feet from the OHW and the shed could be as well. The front of the house is occupied by the driveway, a garage and a type-two mound septic system, so there's no space for the placement of the storage shed. And then in the lakeside, we have the well is located there. It's showing on the screen, it's had the blue dot. That's a few feet from the existing shed. The shed's surrounded by mature pine trees and tall shrubs between the property fence and the shed. The size of this property is comparable to a lot of the lots in the Coon Lake area, making the location of the shed where it was installed pretty much the only reasonable location on this property. Again, just because of the existing street side, there's no place for it. Consideration of variances required is a three factor test for practical difficulties. The first factor is a test of reasonableness, meaning the landowner will, would like to use the property in a practical way but cannot do so under the rules of the ordinance. In this case, the detached accessory structure for residential uses is a reasonable use for the property. City code does state that all properties are allowed one shed of two hundred square feet or less. The second factor is that the landowner's problem is due to circumstances unique to the property and not caused by the landowner. In this case, due to the small lot size, location of the septic mound system, the well, there is no other location on the property to place the shed. The front yard of this property, again, is the driveway and the mound system. As you can see on the slide though, the east wall of the residence is seventy-five foot, set seventy-five feet back from the lake. The well is to the east of the paved patio in the rear yard. And between the well and the shed, there's mature trees prohibiting the shed to be moved any closer or any further away from the OHW. The third factor is the variance would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. So the resulting structure will not be out of scale, out of place or otherwise inconsistent with the surrounding area. So we have a. So the picture on the left is a photo of existing properties within the city of East Bethel along Coon Lake that have non-conforming structures. And there's fifteen detached accessory structures and thirty-three residential structures along that side of the lake with similar or smaller setbacks to the OHW. Staff has received a concern from the resident to the north regarding the placement of the shed. She also spoke at the public hearing. The resident stated the shed does impede her view of the lake. And if, up here on the right-hand side, this is out her window, she supplied us with this photo. So this is during the summer months, looking out her window. And then at the planning commission meeting, and it's in your packet, she also gave two photos. One is a view of the shed from her property and more so in the winter months with the leaves off. And then it's also a photo, the photo of the property's owner's boat and that's attachment seven in your packet. She did express opposition to the variance request. There were two emails that were also received by staff in support of this variance. They became part of the public record at the planning commission meeting. They were read aloud and again became part of the public record. Those emails are attached as attachment eight. The commission did discuss that there were no ordinances protecting views of the lake across neighboring properties. And setback reductions in this area are common, including setbacks from the OHW. So the commission voted unanimously six zero, one absent, in favor of recommending the approval of the variance. So at this time, again, the commission recommends approval to the city council for the variance to reduce the setback from the OHW from seventy-five feet to sixty feet for the placement of a fifty-four square foot shed with a condition set forth in resolution two thousand twenty-two dash nineteen.
Is there a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty-two dash nineteen of the variance to allow a setback reduction of fifteen feet for a setback of sixty feet for the placement of a residential shed on the property located at one nine five one nine East Front Boulevard Northeast.
I'll second. Motion made, second discussion. Stephanie, the only question I had, at the planning commission, they were talking about electric. What, what, what was the deal with the electric?
Yeah, so they had put electric in the shed and they had not gotten a permit, but after the planning commission meeting, they did come in and get the correct permits for it.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I want to say I'm not pleased that they're coming for a variance after it's already been built. for a variance after it's already been built, and I think that's, that's just wrong. My other comment is, so anybody who lives along that lake can put up a shed that's under two hundred square feet without any kind of permit, is that correct?
That's correct, it needs to meet setbacks.
And this meets the setbacks?
This one doesn't, that's why we have a variance before us.
So, why wouldn't they come prior to building it to get the variance?
They have, may not have known, again, they didn't need to have a permit, so it was placed out there.
But in the email from the resident that is objecting to this, they said that somebody from the city went there and gave them permission to put it there, so.
Yeah, I don't recall that, but staff was out there on numerous occasions to take a look at it and measure it from the OHW to find out what the setback was. And I do know there, there was actually one point, too, where they did remove some of their impervious coverage, so they could keep the shed, and staff was out there at that time, too.
So if staff had been out there, then they knew that it was against the rules?
Yes, well, they ended up getting non-compliant letters from the city for it. So that's why we're here, is they did get the non-compliant letter saying it did not meet the setback, and they did apply for the variance for it.
And they can't move, they couldn't have placed that shed any place a little bit up closer to the house where it wasn't going to impede neighbors' views or even their view of the lake, it's.
Yeah, if you go, go out to their property, they don't have any other places to put this. Because they do, again, you move it anywhere closer to the fence area, then they're getting into that side yard setback as well, and because of that well is in, is the spot where it is, and there's also a really large pine tree in the way that they would have had to taken down.
Stephanie, what can you tell me about the fence that's on that property line? Has it been the same length, has there, has there been additions to it?
No additions to it, we looked back, as we have aerials from back to two thousand and eight, and that fence was in place at that time.
That's.
And there hasn't been any, any additions to it since then.
That's kind of my consensus on that, too, I looked at those aerials, and so this building is right behind the fence?
Yes, right at the end of the fence.
So it sort of makes it, is it past the fence, or it's right at the edge of the fence?
If I remember correctly, the fence goes down quite a bit further to the lake than the than the actual shed.
Because I'm looking at the photos that were provided by the neighbor.
Goes a little bit further.
It goes a little bit further past. Do you see where the shed is, Suzanne, there?
I think right here.
Right there. And then the white fence goes further than the shed.
Because I, I'm, I'm looking at the photos that were provided by the neighbor, and it, it doesn't look like they're taken from the same angle. I don't know if anybody else looked at that, but one is showing the end of the fence and the lake, and the other, you can't see the end of the fence.
It's behind the tree there.
Yeah.
That's the one on the screen there.
Yeah, so I I don't know exactly what kind of view was just blocked based upon these photos.
And once again, I agree with the planning commission that we don't have an ordinance that says anything about blocking the view, and by looking at this, the fence blocks longer and further towards the lake than the shed does, and with the trees there, you really have to look to see that there's a shed back there.
Without, without all of us going out there and standing.
I did go out there and look at it, and the shed is, the fence is longer than the shed, or past the shed.
Without all of us going out there and standing in that same view, it's really hard to tell.
Well, I still think he should have, the owners that put that shed up should have done it the right way in the first place, and came to the city and got permission and a variance in the beginning before they built it, and saying that they didn't know, I think if they are friends with the mayor, I think, I think they knew, and that's, that's just my opinion.
Well, and I'm not.
I, I'll, I'll take exception to what you just said. That is very unfair to the applicants to say that.
And just to compare.
And me.
Variance cases, we had one a couple of months ago, where there's a storage container set on a property which was not allowed, and the applicants did then change the exterior so that would fit the architectural deals. They placed that container there without permission. They placed it not in the right spot, so they had to get a variance for setbacks, and yet we still allowed it. So why is this case bad, and the other case was fine? This is why we have variances. People are human, they don't always know all the rules.
That's what I'd like to say, I'm glad they came for it, after they, they must know that, that there was an issue, so they came for a variance. A lot of people wouldn't come, they would just say, to heck with it, so I'm, I'm glad that they came when they figured out there was something wrong, so.
Well, I think they came because the neighbor complained.
Well, that doesn't have anything to do with.
However it showed up in front of us, it's here now.
And I guess we have, unless there's more discussion.
I have nothing else to say.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I abstain.
And Steve is saying that motion passes. Steve, I'll give it back to you.
Here we go. All right, so item six eighty-three, interim use permit for home occupation at twenty-ten twenty-eight Rendova Street, Northeast. Stephanie?
This agenda item, again, is to consider the approval for an interim use permit to allow home occupation for the operation of a dog training business known as Star Dog Training LLC. It is a dog training business with no boarding and no kennel services. It offers one-hour training group sessions up to six dogs with an average of four dogs per session. Star Training, or Star Dog Training also offers individual one-on-one sessions. Here is an aerial of the property. The majority of the classes will be held within the detached accessory structure. The applicant has also begun the process of fencing a portion of the front yard, so occasionally, weather permitting, training could take place outdoors. The fence will be four feet in height, located north of the driveway, so in the front yard at this point. Eventually, they want to fence in the whole yard, but because it is very expensive, they're starting out with an area for training the dogs right now. The fence plans have been reviewed by staff, and they meet ordinance requirements, you can have four-foot chain link fence in the front yard, is what they plan on doing. Planning hours of operation are Monday through Friday from nine AM to nine PM. This is to accommodate dog owners who work during the day to have access to pet training in evening hours. The applicant anticipates Friday hours ending at five PM on most weeks. There is adequate off-street parking for anticipated class sizes on the existing driveway on the property. Planning commission held the public hearing on March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two, at which there were four residents who spoke. There were three neighbor, property owners, neighbors attending in favor of the request, all of whom mentioned dogs barking is already a very common complaint in this neighborhood. And there was also one neighbor who had some following concerns and questions. He did ask about, you know, are dogs going to be confined to the property, and is there a limit? And yes, dog training will take place in the detached accessory structure in the front yard. Dogs will always be leased, there's no roaming dogs during any training. Dogs are limited to six per class. And it was also asked, why does the business have an existing website? This is an existing business, she had a facility away from here. However, due to COVID and the pandemic, the business closed down, and she would like to relocate the business to her home. She does have liability insurance, that was a question, and question on aggressive breeds. If she has any dogs that display any type of aggressive behavior, they will be required to wear muzzles. There was also concern about excess barking of dogs, and the applicant did explain her barking policy. And again, barking is, I'm assuming, probably one of the bigger behaviors she addresses during this. And it is, the dogs are only allowed to bark up to four times, so there's, there isn't going to be six dogs in a fenced area just barking habitually. Again, this, these are training sessions to get dogs to stop barking, or just basic training. There was also discussion of the potential traffic issues, if classes were to run concurrently, to which the applicant did state that if it does become an issue, she will address it by staggering the class times, like fifteen minutes, just to ensure there's no detriment to the neighborhood. Planning commission, there wasn't much discussion on this. The commission did vote to recommend approval of the IUP with the additional condition that the IUP expires in three years with a six, zero vote, there was one member absent. Staff did receive a phone call from a concerned resident who was unable to attend the planning commission meeting for the public hearing, and he did express concerns, again, regarding barking dob, dogs in the neighborhood, just said that there's habitual barking already in the neighborhood of dogs, and and then also possible traffic concerns. Again, planning commission recommends approval to the city council for the IUP to allow the home occupation of operating the dog training business with the conditions set forth in resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash twenty.
Is there a motion on this resolution tonight?
I'll make a motion for approving resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty, granting an interim use permit for a home occupation for a dog training business located at two-one zero-two-eight Rendova Street, Northeast, pin number fourteen thirty-three twenty-three, twenty-three dash zero-zero-zero-nine.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion.
I do have some discussion on the terms. Number one, permit shall expire A three years from date of approval. I would wonder if there'd be any consideration to change that language to permit shall be reviewed in three years, rather than have the permit expire.
One of my questions is, I'm not sure why we're expiring it, because then you have to go through the whole process again.
They do.
Yeah, then you have to pay a fee again, too, correct?
We have a fifty-dollar renewal fee.
Well, it would be a renewal at that time.
Yeah, it'd be expired, so, yeah, so if they renew it prior to the expiration, then it's a fifty-dollar fee.
No, it's still, where, I read it, Brian's read it, it says it just expires, there's no provision for renewal, which I thought we normally do, don't we normally have like a one-year IUP, and it's reviewed and renewed by, by staff?
In the past, they have, yes.
Chris, do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I, I read it the, the same way that it's going to, going to expire. That being said, if they, if they got a renewal application in in advance, I think it would be treated as a, as a renewal, as that's been our standard practice, so.
I want to add something in here, I'm trying to figure out where to add it. I'll amend the resolution, make a motion to amend condition one A at the end, after two thousand and twenty-five, say unless the applicant has submitted a renewal for application by that date. So they don't have to go through this whole process again. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Discussion.
I, is there a discussion just on your motion?
On amendment.
Oh, okay, no, nothing.
Okay, to the motion to amend, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, back to original motion.
Go ahead, Suzanne.
With this, will the city send out a letter before it expires?
That's what we do, yes.
Okay. Okay, go, carry on.
Okay, I have a question on the number two, no more than six dogs that are not licensed with the city of East Bethel to this property, maybe on the property at any given time. So they could have twenty dogs that are licensed in East Bethel on the property, that's, no, it's not making a lot of sense.
That was briefly talked about at the meeting, and I believe it was written that way, because I thought the same thing, but it was written that way to exclude the owner's dogs.
Right, well, I understand that, but I think it should just say something to the effect that they can only train six dogs at a time, or some, have six
How about?
Clients at a time, or something like that.
How about striking the verbiage about license with the city of East Bethel, and just say, no more than six dogs that aren't owned by the owner? Is that, make it clear?
Yeah.
But this doesn't make sense, but it is.
Like, because it is confusing, so, you're right, it could be twenty dogs, that's, that's not what we're doing, and not what they're going to do either, I know that. Can't imagine, managing six dogs, but.
I have a question on the nine to nine, is nine at night, is that really the time you need it to go to, is nine at night?
Not every night, I have.
Could, I'm sorry, could, could you come to the podium, please, you, you've got to be on microphone, so, if you could state your name and address.
I am Carrie Kerner, I live at two-one zero-two-eight Rendova Street, Northeast, East Bethel, Minnesota. Those are just my extreme hours, I have only one client I kind of wanted at eight o'clock start day, or start time, because she works late hours in the city, and then to get home from the city to go up to work to get over here. I normally am done by eight PM.
Okay.
I don't want to work that late.
Eight makes a little, eight makes a little more sense in a residential area than nine does, but.
Well, it's, I mean.
It could go to ten, yes, you could.
People don't get home sometimes, so leaving six-six-three if they're working in town, and.
Yeah, so that would, that would essentially be.
Nine, to me, nine o'clock, it's still before dark in the summer, at least.
That would be, your shop is closed by nine o'clock, your last client would be showing up at eight.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
All right, that's, I just had that question.
If you could stay there. First of all, what, it's a wonderful thing you're doing, I mean, I, I, I went through dog training many years ago, and I wish more people would do it. Perhaps we'd have less dog issues at council if we did that, but, but a couple things that I have a bit of concern about, mostly it's centered around the parking. If you, if, if you're successful, we hope you are, you're going to have six clients, and like we said, you're going to have six clients come back, so you could have a lot of cars, just looking at the aerial, I'm not sure, do you know how you're going to have six cars parked in a driveway like that?
So there can fit four in front of the detached garage.
Okay.
And then we have most of our cars in our, in the garage, so there'd be room up by our other garage for them to park. So that'd be two extra cars up there.
It just, it just, to me, it just looks hard to maneuver around, and.
And then we're also potentially thinking of where that camper is, kind of like where that elbow is, to even put plus-five gravel up there, so people could be able to back in and out.
Okay. My concern on, on it is, and we support the home businesses that come in, but for most part, I think the thing we have to look at most critically is the, the potential impact on neighborhood. And I can't remember a home business that's had so much traffic like this will have. I mean, the hairstylist usually have one car at a time, this could have six cars at a time, if, you know, if you're successful. So it's, it's just more opportunity for conflict. I mean, if you're successful, there's always going to be cars there, right, that's kind of your idea, so.
And if I do need a staggered hours, fifteen, twenty minutes, half hour.
Yeah, I don't expect you're going to be, you know, twelve hours a day full car, I, I, you know, if you are, I hope you would consider a commercial spot.
Oh, yeah.
Back to the commercial.
That, that is sort of the premise of, you know, of granting home. That is sort of the premise of, you know, of granting home permit or home occupation permits is eventually that you're successful enough that they do step up and go to a commercial, you know, areas. So that parking, and we don't have a blanket prohibition on this, but maybe with this one, you know, we want to consider adding no on-street parking. Because I think that's what irritates residents more when there's a whole line of cars there. And if it's there every day, every day, every day. I see that potentially being a conflict. So are you okay if we don't need no on-street parking for the business?
Yeah, I don't think that should be a problem.
Okay.
I mean, maybe if it is, it's going to be for five minutes for someone to come out of the driveway to go back in. But again, if it's against that point, I will adjust my hours.
Yeah, I mean, there's going to be times, I understand that. But just as, because I think in times past, we've kind of added that, make sure, you know, you have adequate onsite parking, but we've never said no off-site parking or on-street parking, so. I'll make a motion to amend that we add another condition, I'll pick condition nine, I guess, that there be no on-street parking by the business. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made, second. Discussion.
So that's just for the business, personal use?
Just for the business, yeah.
Personal use or could they can park out there all day long?
Yeah, I don't think we need to be the business of telling people.
There're not going to be any signs.
I mean, we're controlling, we're mostly kind of trying to get a handle on the business aspect of it, so.
We're mostly asking you to ensure it.
Yes.
I just want to make sure it's not, it sounds like it's not part of your plan anyway. So I just want to make, that way, you know, because I know there's a little bit of neighbor concern about parking. So that's why we maybe can avoid issues in the future. Any other discussion on the motion to amend?
There's going to be no signs for no.
What's that?
They're not going to have a no parking sign, correct?
No, no, we're just saying that, we're just saying that part of the resolution. I'm adding it to the resolution is what I'm doing, so.
I'm fine with it, yeah.
So.
My clients can't respect that, then.
Any other discussion on the motion to amend? Okay, on the motion to amend, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes. Back to original motion. How much, I know you have an outdoor area and it's with dogs. I know it's sometimes easier to be outdoors. How much of that of your business you think is actually going to be outdoors?
Mostly I just want to do agility out there so they actually have area to get the speed up to run the courses.
And you're just doing obedience training, right?
Obedience and a little bit of agility.
Okay.
A lot of, most of the handling agility, foundation agility can be done inside.
Sure.
But once you get to the competition level.
But you're not doing field training or anything like that?
No.
Okay, okay. So, okay. That's the questions I have. Is there a discussion? Okay, to the motion as amended, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. I know you're here already, but welcome your business to East Bethel.
Thank you. To the neighborhood.
All right, so that completes new business. Onto department reports, Public Works. Nate Ashford's here.
Good evening. Item 7.0E1 of the 2022 JPA Street Maintenance Project Bids. Consider approving the 2022 JPA Street Project Bids and authorization to submit a letter of concurrence for bid acceptance. The following projects were approved to be bid as part of the 2022 JPA Street Maintenance Program by the City Council on January 24, 2022. These projects have been identified in the 2022 to 2026 Street Capital Improvement Plan and include 150,000 linear feet of pavement markings and 150,000 linear feet of crack sealing. The allocated budget for seal coating, crack sealing, and striping above the streets was $200,000. These projects will be funded from the Street Capital Fund as identified in the 2022-2026 Capital Improvement Plan. On Friday, March 11th, the City of Coon Rapids received and opened the bids for the North Metro Street Maintenance Program. The bid costs for our portion of the JPA project were as follows. For the striping portion, we were $14,040. For the crack filling portion, we were $69,000. And with contingency and administrative costs added, the total project cost was $88,062. The bid results are consistent with past costs and the project is budgeted in the 2022 capital fund. The project can be amended regarding the inclusion of additional line item bid quantities. As these bids are significantly below the project estimate, staff will examine the potential 2022 maintenance needs to determine the possibility of contracting directly with the low bidder for additional work under this agreement or apply the balance to pavement overlay projects. The recommendation from staff that they have reviewed the bids and recommend acceptance of the 22 JPA Street Maintenance Agreement bids in the amount of $88,062 and authorization to submit a letter of concurrence to the City of Coon Rapids indicating our participation in the project.
Is there a motion tonight?
Make a motion for acceptance of the 2022 JPA Street Maintenance Agreement bids in the amount of $88,062 and authorize to submit a letter of concurrence to the City of Coon Rapids indicating our participation in this project.
Second. Motion made, second. Discussion.
So is that correct? It was bid at, or we estimated it at 200 and it came in at 88?
We set aside $200,000. We did not do any chip sealing on this project. We've started our capital improvement planning for our road projects. And we're going to be pretty short on our overlays. We want to take as much money and keep that for doing overlays. We'll be coming to the council at a coming work session meeting to go over that capital improvement plan for the roads, so.
But if there's a road with issues, you'll do it? I mean, you'll look at it for seal cracking if there's, if you find somewhere else?
Yes, we can always add, like, we're going to add the fire station one to this.
Yes.
This was after we submitted our quantities, but we'll stay within our quantity limit.
Thank you.
Well, again, this, I think of all the programs that have been out there over the years, this is one of the better ones for not only our city, but the other cities to work together and get these prices down. I'm a little surprised that costs came in much lower than expected considering everything else that's going on these days. So that's good.
I was kind of shocked by that.
Yeah, so that's good. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Hearing none. To the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Thanks, Nate. Onto our quasi-city administrator.
Next agenda item is just the approval of the April work meeting. It's scheduled for Monday, April 4th at 7:00 P.M. With the items that you'll see in your reports, recommended for discussion. So staff just recommends city council to set the agenda items as presented for the April 4th work session.
I'll make a motion to set the agenda items as presented for the April 4th, 2022 work meeting.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to add one more if we got time on, bringing everyone back to city hall. You know, back.
I'm sorry?
Bringing everybody back to city hall. You know, because we've had people working at home during COVID and all that thing, all that's. I've had some issues with people calling, they can't get through, nobody here, so. We've got, we've got to have people here, people not answering phones, so.
Stephanie, how, I know Jackie still works at home, but do we have other staff that are still working at home?
Yeah, Mike works from home times, at times. I work from home at times on Fridays sometimes, and then Erin does on Mondays.
I'll second that motion to add that, I guess.
Like I said, it's just a discussion, that's, you know, they shouldn't be calling me. They should be calling city hall or something.
We can add that.
Yeah, okay. I'll second.
Okay, I guess I formed it as a motion to amend to add city staffing on as item six.
I'll second.
Second, discussion on the motion to amend. Hearing none on motion to amend, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Back to original motion. Any further discussion? Okay, to the motion as amended, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that motion passes. Item 7G2.
Next one is the voluntary cost sharing agreement for Anoka County Regional Economic Development. The county, the city, and other community partners enter into a memorandum of agreement on January 1st of 2019 to set goals, create an action plan, and implement shared objectives in promoting economic development within Anoka County through the Anoka County Regional Economic Development Board. The MOA, the memorandum of agreement, addresses the needs and means for cost sharing between the county and its cities and township to support continued services for the website, social media support, marketing assistance, and other services related to the countywide economic development initiative. ACRID, again, the Anoka County Regional Economic Development Board. Personnel costs are covered by the county. The budget for the above activities is prepared annually and provides a formula for each participating municipality to provide proportional cost sharing based upon its population. The budget for services related to the website, social media, marketing, and other supportive activities required for economic development for ACRID is currently set at $20,750 for the calendar year of 2022. East Bethel's share for 2022 is $672. For purposes of this calculation, population size of the city is based upon the Met Council's most recent population estimate. So at this time, city council is asked to consider the approval of the 2022 voluntary cost share agreement, which is the attachment one, and approval of the payment of the 2022 economic development cost share invoice for the City of East Bethel in the amount of $672.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion for approval of the 2022 voluntary cost sharing agreement as seen in attachment one.
Second. Motion's made, and second, discussion. I think this is an easy and good investment.
No brainer, yeah.
Okay, hearing no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Onto staff report.
No, there's.
We need to do the approval of the payment.
For the payment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So.
I thought that was part of it.
I'll make, no, that was just the first one. It looked like we had to do two of these separate, so. So I'll make a motion for approval of a payment of $672 for the 2022 economic development cost share invoice for the City of East Bethel as seen in attachment two.
Second. Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none, to the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. I'm at the end of the agenda. Staff report.
I have no staff reports.
Okay, council reports. Suzanne.
I have nothing.
Tim.
The fire department today had fire and smoke behavior. And last Thursday, Nate, myself, and Jack met with Todd Gibson from the management group at the ice arena. I'm sure you'll kind of have the findings at the work meeting next week. So I just want to give you a little heads up, so, and that's all I've got.
Okay, Wanda.
The only thing I've got is to invite everyone on the council and members of our audience. The chamber's sunrise breakfast is on April 14th at Route 65 at 7:30 in the morning.
Seven, isn't it?
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty, I thought seven seven.
Seven thirty. You're there at seven.
Yeah. Is that it?
That's it. Mr. Mary, will you be available?
Yeah, it's on my calendar.
Thank you.
Thank you for the warning. Brian.
Three different meetings. There was the Economic Development Authority meeting. I was not able to attend this meeting, but I did review the video and actually read the packet. Big item to note was Finley Engineering that's doing the broadband internet study. Gave us a live update. And I believe his report was given out to council already.
The packets are, Jack has the packets, it's about this there.
Yeah, so we'll be discussing that.
Yeah, so we will be discussing that at the next work meeting. That was the biggest thing on that. Planning Commission, we went through everything tonight that happened at the planning commission. And then we had the North Highway 65 Corridor Coalition Meeting. Let's see, the big thing from here was the promotional video is just about done. We were able to watch the, call it second to the final version of it as for any last minute changes or suggestions that we'd want to make. They, so they're anticipating from that point, we can have to do the final, to have the final video out, so that'd be roughly the first week in April. So I'm anticipating that we can view that as council on our meeting on 4/11. So, and then they also did talk about some grant opportunities that there are some new grant opportunities for roadways, the National Infrastructure Project Assistance, they call that MEGA. There's up to $1 billion available. Infrastructure for rebuilding America, up to $1.55 billion available. And rural surface transportation, rural, up to $300 million available. One of these may be applicable to help fund our next furniture project. So Jack as well has all this information. And I believe Anoka County is putting together a big package for one of the larger ones as far as Highway 65 projects. So, and their suggestion is for that, let's get all the projects rolled into one so we can make one grant application. So that is kind of some exciting news on transportation. Other than that, town hall meeting for 21.
Yep.
Booster Day coming in July.
It'll come soon enough.
No, that's all I have.
Okay, I just have a couple of things. One, it's that time of year where the ice starts coming off on lakes. And just a reminder of those who do venture out. And there were people out last week in the middle of Coon Lake.
Really?
Yeah, and the lake fissured in about four places this afternoon, so I don't know. And the ice is still thick, I saw them drilling it, but I don't know if I trust them. Just keep in mind that if you get in trouble, there's others that have to risk themselves to go save you too, so. Last thing, and then I participated in a, I think it was a market study basically that Connectus Energy was doing. And they interviewed a lot of leaders from around the county. And so I was on a call with two other folks, city manager at Coon Rapids, and I think he's the county administrator of Becker County. But they were asking questions and viewpoints on how we view energy and energy needs. So it was interesting just to hear them ask the questions, what they're looking for. So Connectus is being very, you know, forward on their thinking, on planning for the future. But, so we had a meeting. One thing I wanted to bring up was really interesting that they said that in their interview with another community, I don't remember what he said, is they actually changed their building code to require any new residential homes to have a provision to wire in an EV charger into the house. Not to put the charger in, but to have the house wired for it so it can be converted later. in, but to have the house wired for it so it can be converted later. And I think aside from whatever you feel about E V and gas and everything, it's like, that was probably about the most forward thing, thing, forward thinking thing I've heard in a long time, because there'll probably be ten percent of the cost to do it now that will be in the future if you have to add a whole other power line into your house and into the box, so.
Yeah, I know that one of the programs for builders that Connectus offers is to just run the conduit through the wall to where, and the charger.
I think that's probably all it is.
Yeah, the charging, I'll let just to a box.
Yeah.
Because one of the things now is what wire do you put in it for average? Because different cars require different averages, where they may not be able to take advantage of, is a fifty amp, one hundred amp, one fifty. So as long as you just have the conduit in the walls to snake the wire through, that's what they're looking for.
As a builder, are you doing that at all?
Uh, we've looked at it, but as of yet, we have not. We haven't had, in fact, any questions from clients or anything about it. But right now, a lot of our garages only get finished with the firewall, so there's plenty of opportunity in the future to run a conduit through the two-by-fours. It'd be just as easy, there's no sheet rock take off. So if you're finishing a garage, that would absolutely be a good idea.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I think it, I mean, it can't be a very big investment to, to put the conduit in, so. But it'd be very expensive in some cases to do it after the fact. I know from my house, the, the box isn't in the garage, it's in the middle of the house, and how you get there, I can't.
There's, there's always ways, but.
There's always ways, but if you do it ahead of time during construction, it's just pipe, right? It's just conduit pipe.
Yeah.
It's not cheap anymore, but you know, it's.
Yeah.
So I thought that was interesting, and I think something we should think about, just adding into our code too. Maybe we can talk about work meetings, so. But anyhow, that, that's all I have, so. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, motion adjourned, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? A motion passes, our meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.